That was always a fun thing. And Mayor Lee would remember that, but we don't get to do that here.
You wouldn't give you Steve Ross's request if we didn't like you.
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Your first item is your agenda. We would like to poll items number 29 and 33. And with those items polled, your agenda is ready for your approval.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda but remove or delete items 29 and 33? It's been moved, seconded.
Seconded.
And seconded.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. You're on a roll.
Your next item is to receive your General Manager's Report. And we do have a few items for you. Our first item in the GM report is to recognize RTC Superstar of the Quarter. Please help me congratulate Vehicle Maintenance Inspector Roger Johnson. Roger recently was asked to develop a notification system telling the operator that a passenger is going to deboard with a bicycle. Roger came up with the idea to install a button similar to the stop request system that would notify the operator of this event. This new feature is being included in the design of all new fixed route vehicles and will greatly assist customers and further enhance our commitment to providing a safe and efficient transit system. We'd like to say, "Well done, Roger." Thank you for your dedication.
I appreciate the Superstar of the Quarter. I was just working with my team and thinking about fixing the problems that we're presented with, and it's just part of the job, so thank you.
Is that your team up there?
Yes, Rudy Long and Randy Brown up there. And Frank also up there. And Steve.
So on behalf of the board, we have this and the superstar. We should probably do that.
No cash, can you?
No cash. And here's the box to keep that safe. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you again.
Any more?
Any more?
The next item in the GM report is to recognize an operator from each of our fixed route contractors. First, from NV Transportation, please help me congratulate Michael Jones. Michael's been an operator for 13 years and recently reached his 2-million-mile mark. He consistently ranks high on on-time performance and is an exemplary operator. On many occasions, Michael has been seen giving instructions and pointers to some of the newer drivers and is a true example of a consummate professional. Thank you, Michael, for your service to our customers.
I'm kind of lost for words, but thank you, everybody that supported me and understand what we go through. 2 million is a long ways to go. I'm gonna try to do two more. And I want to thank NV for giving me the opportunity to do this. I can go on and on and on, but I'm gonna cut it off right here. Thank you.
That's your favorite song. Yeah.
I'm kind of nervous. Can you help me?
Yes.
You're feeling good, man.
You're doing fine. You're doing great.
She intimidates me. That's what you say.
There you go. Thank you, Michael.
We have two more. Next recognition is for Jim West, detour and road supervisor. Jim works closely, Jim West.
Jim West.
Jim works closely with RTC staff to keep current on the many road projects which affect transit routes and the overall customer experience. He calculates ways to minimize any impact to the customer by posting important detour information and stop closures for the many construction projects and special events around the valley. Fun fact, outside of work, Jim is a Screen Actors Guild member and was in several movies filmed here in Las Vegas. He was even a stunt performer in the movie Con Air.
Really?
Can you show us your stunt?
Yeah, show us some stunts, right?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for this award, or recognition, I should say. And I'd like to thank my team. There's the Keolis team. And my RTC team over there. Thank you very much. And as far as the movie bit, I really haven't done anything in a long time, so I'm really a loss for words. Thank you.
I told him, I said, "Did you work on Rock and Reel?" And he said, "Yes." And I said, "Good report."
One more.
Thank you.
One more, Mayor Lee. Sorry. In other exciting news, last month, Club Ride Commuter Services received the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's Clean Air Excellence Award for Community Action. This award recognizes innovative outreach programs that protect the environment, educate the public, serve communities, and boost the economy. Club Ride recognizes the unique 24-hour workforce in Clark County and has tailored its alternative commute program to meet the needs of each employer. Their outreach coordinators conducted over 650 work site and community events this year, including health fairs, orientations, and special events such as Bike Week. This is an extremely huge honor for the Club Ride and the RTC. Congratulations, Club Ride, on this great accolade, and thank you for all of your hard work to create a cleaner, more sustainable Southern Nevada.
Thank you so much for this, well, to the EPA, but we couldn't have done it without such a supportive and progressive agency that allows us to explore different technology and, of course, an amazing outreach and marketing team. So thank you so much for giving us this honor.
Thank you. Clean, it's green, and it's good.
We're gonna share with you today some insight into our new Seeing Orange campaign. The RTC has been working with the local jurisdictions, public works departments, and public information officers, the American Traffic Safety Services Association, and the associated general contractors to put together a resource for commuters to get information on construction around the valley. Last week, in conjunction with National Infrastructure Week, we launched Seeing Orange, which includes a public hotline, 702-928-CONE, and a dedicated website, seeingorangenv.com. Individuals can call in or email requests for more information about construction projects in their neighborhood or along their commute. An RTC staff member will work directly with each entity's public works department to provide more information to constituents in a timely manner. I have to tell you that the objective of this campaign is to provide information to commuters that will help reduce their frustration when seeing orange cones and hopefully establish trust and credibility with the general public. Over the next several weeks, we'll be promoting this campaign throughout our community. Now, I will show you a campaign video here. I want to share with you that I thought I'd be really great and be the very first person to call in, so I called in this weekend about some cones that I was upset about, but I found out that I was actually the 30th person to call in. So apparently, it's already getting some traction. The way that it works is that we collect these calls, the RTC will collect the phone calls with this one through a centralized contact number or email. The RTC will then, within 24 hours, respond back to the constituent, letting them know that we're looking into it. We will contact the public works departments within whichever jurisdiction that project is in, and at this point, our commitment is within 72 hours to have a response back. Now, as we work, as this becomes more efficient, it's possible that we can reduce the number of hours that it takes us to get back, but the goal really is to make sure that constituents have a way of contacting us, so that way, instead of being frustrated and not knowing anything about these cones, they have a way of communicating directly with us. They may point out to us cones that need to be removed. So it's going to be a two-way street. They'll be sharing information with us, just as we'll be sharing information with them.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think Rudy's cellphone number should be on there.
Rudy's cellphone number? Rudy is on our list.
Just a thought, Director.
So we'll go ahead and show you a video.
Mayor Lee had a question.
Might I ask you a question? I understand cone removal, but sometimes signs fall over in the street and the wind catches them, just distractions. This can also be used for any type of...
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. In fact, one of the things I had called, and I was extremely frustrated on Eastern Road, and City Henderson's so wonderful, that my problem was taken care of within 24 hours. But some cones were, it was sporadic. Cones were up, they were down, they were pulled back, some were still in the lane. But basically, when you take a lane with cones, you're taking, when you have a three-lane road, you're taking over 30% of the capacity from that road. So, yes, certainly calling in about any cones that appear to not be consistent or managed.
The big signs that fall over and stuff.
And signage, too.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you very much.
And I think maybe at some point, you could track, because the contractors, I believe, with most of our public works directors, have to put up the barriers and take them down. It's part of their contract. So if we start seeing that there's a pattern of behavior of some contractors not doing what they're supposed to do under their contract, that'll help us get better information as well. So I think there's a two-way street, so we can have a conversation with them. Former Assemblyman David Goldwater used to say, "I was born and raised here, and I've never not seen an orange cone on Desert Inn." And he's hoping that someday that that would be done, but it is frustrating. It's also dangerous, you're right, those intermittent signs and the distractions that can come into play with that, so I think this will be very helpful. I happened to catch this the other morning.
Oh, you did? Good. Certainly, the program, as it evolves, will become probably more efficient, and hopefully our constituents learn to use it. I encourage you, go ahead, put it in your speed dial on your phone. We would love to hear from you. So we'll show you the video.
Are traffic cones driving you crazy? Well, the next time you see orange, you can get answers. Introducing seeingorangenv.com. It's the place to go for answers on traffic projects and make comments about construction areas that concern you. Send your questions directly through the website or speak to an actual person. How often do you get to do that? We're all trying to make our roadways better, so the next time you're seeing orange, don't let it drive you crazy. Visit seeingorangenv.com or call 928-CONE.
Brought to you by the RTC and AIT News Now.
All right. Any other questions regarding the Seeing Orange campaign? Our next item is a sad one, a sudden one, a surprise one, and a sad one. This is our very last meeting with Councilman Ross. He is now mayor pro temp of the city of Las Vegas, and we'll be moving on. We will miss you terribly. You've been a wonderful supporter. You've been an enthusiastic member. You've engaged in conversations, and you've let us do our thing, given us guidance, but never really, you've never micromanaged. And it's wonderful to work with an entire board like this. I understand that Mayor Goodman will be joining us effective next meeting.
With your permission, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. I think I echo Tina's words as well.
Thank you. And Ms. Quigley and your staff have been phenomenal, all of you are, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. I'm not going very far. You still have my number, so don't hesitate to reach out to me and to my fellow board members as well. Thank you very much for allowing me to serve on this board. I'm looking forward to better and great things coming out of the RTC than before I was here, so Mayor Goodman will be a fine replacement for me. So thank you very much.
Next item on your agenda is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's Report.
Thank you, Tina. Thank you, Madam Chair. So NDOT is following closely the actions of Congress this week. The House passed a two-month extension of the Surface Transportation Act. The Senate will take it up before they recess at the end of this week, so I expect that maybe today that they'll pass that two-month extension. The reason for only two months is they can't determine where the additional funding will come from for the gap in federal funding to transportation. The Senate and House have been talking about corporate income tax reform, but that's gonna take a lot longer to develop and to pass through Congress, but we'll keep the board informed of those actions, and we're hopeful that they'll find a source of revenue for that additional increase that's needed to just keep the states receiving the same amount of transportation funding that they've been receiving. On the legislative front here at home, a lot of great action by the legislature, Assembly Bill 191 should be approved finally, as well as waiting to see what will happen with Senate Bill 2. It was passed by Assembly and State Senate. That was reducing from 85 mile per hour to an 80 mile per hour speed limit. It doesn't require NDOT to go out there and change the speed limits automatically, but that would be the maximum speed limit allowed, whereas currently 75. And other bills that we're following are bills about confidentiality on some of the, what we call, alternative procurement methods, construction manager at risk or design build. We like to keep the proposals confidential until such time as we issue an intent-to-award letter to the preferred team. So we wanted to keep proposals confidential. That's going through, we expect a 30-year bond term to be available to the department to issue highway revenue bonds instead of the current 20-year term, so that's still looking good for the department. So we're also following some other bills that came up during the session. High occupancy toll lanes or hot lanes could pass, but it was something that came kind of late in the session. It's not really coming together well, but we'll keep following that to see if it passes through. It was something that was offered up by the Chairman of the Assembly Transportation Committee. And another one was storm water enforcement granted to the Department of Transportation. Currently, we have to rely on the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection when we have polluted water coming onto our right-of-way for enforcement. So that one passed, and it does also include a substantial amount of positions, 42 positions approved, new positions for maintenance activities involving our culverts, our pipes, just for water quality program administration. So a significant budget amendment was approved on the Senate side, and it's going forward to the Assembly side for that enforcement authority. And that concludes the Director's Report. Project Neon is on schedule. We'll receive the proposals from the three teams at the end of July, and then it'll take us a couple months to have someone recommended to the board. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Since that's both council, it's really mostly Councilwoman and Tarkanians, but it's in the city, so will we be getting a briefing at some point?
Definitely. We'll have our project team provide a briefing to the county as well.
I think we would probably, we haven't had a town hall or anything like that in a while, so I know that they're out in the process, but maybe part of the update could be what funding scheme is really out there, because I think it's just, right now, it's the purchase of the right-of-way stuff rather than...
Yes, the bonds were issued for purchase of the right-of-way, and in our budget request to the legislature, it has bonds proposed, $250 million in the next biennium to pay for construction.
Okay. And then the EPA component, so you're creating a department within NDOT that'll deal with storm water?
Yes.
Or is it just, or is it any environmental type thing?
It's primary for water quality, environmental issues, so maintenance, the maintenance forces work under the districts, but we're getting them more of the equipment to clean out and to sweep the roads so that pollutants don't go into the storm drain system.
Into the storm drains in the first place, so to prevent it on the front end. Okay. And the fuel tax? I apologize, did you mention that?
Yes, AB 191 is the fuel revenue indexing, so it's looking good.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Rudy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Your next item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
We will open the public comment period for an item related to the agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to approach the board? Thank you. Oh, Kim Poole's here, from Congresswoman Titus's office. Kim, come on down. Item 52.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Kim Poole, District Representative for the Office of Congresswoman Deanna Titus. I'm here on behalf of the Congresswoman in support of Agenda Item Number 52, which is board approval for the proposed RTC Veterans Reduced Fair Program. As a member of the House Committee of the Veterans Affairs, the Congresswoman Titus is a staunch advocate for veterans and their needs, and in bringing quality services to thousands of men and women who have served our nation. We want to applaud the RTC for responding so quickly to the transportation needs that were brought up in our joint roundtable that happened in February. The Veterans Reduced Fair Program is gonna provide financial support and enrich the quality of life for the veterans who rely on our public transportation system. The Congresswoman fully supports this program and is looking forward to the board approval and working directly with RTC staff on the launching of this program. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the board with regard to an agenda item? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Your next agenda items is your consent agenda, which is made up of Items 5 through 51 and may be taken in one motion.
Is there a motion or any items that anyone wants to set aside? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to approve by Mayor Lee, seconded by Councilwoman. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number 52 is to approve the implementation of the Veteran Reduced Fair Program or take action as deemed. We are proposing, at the request of our board and our congressional delegation, to a two-year Veterans Reduced Fair Pilot Program based on the number of comments we receive from veterans and feedback from veterans organizations. Research shows that there are more than 155,000 veterans in Southern Nevada. Staff recommends that local veterans be able to apply for an RTC-issued veteran's ID card with proper verification, which will allow veterans throughout Southern Nevada to purchase transit passes at a 50% discount on RTC fixed route. I do have some more notes on this, a few of the program details. We'll make available the Veterans Reduced Fair Identification Card beginning Memorial Day Weekend. Veterans can apply for this card at the Bonneville Transit Center by providing one of the following proofs of veteran status, a veteran ID card from the Veterans Administration, DC papers, military retiree ID cards. Additionally, in the months of June and July, RTC staff will be onsite at the various veteran organization locations to sign up veterans for this specialized card. And with that, staff recommends approval.
Any questions from the committee members?
Yes, yes.
So you'll do like Veterans Village and any of the hospitals?
Yes, we'll have a significant outreach program.
Excellent.
As we launch this.
Much needed, I think, in the long run, and I think it'll help. Much needed, so thank you, and I commend staff for listening to the folks at the roundtable. That is very swift, from February to now, to have something.
Well, yeah, we've heard from many of you that this is very important.
Mayor Lee? Anyone? Okay. So it's been made to accept the new Veterans Reduced Fair Pilot Project for two years by the Councilwoman and seconded by the mayor. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Very good.
Motion carries.
Items Number 53 through 55 will be handled by Mark Trozdahl, our Director of Finance. Items 53 and 54 will be taken as one, and 55 will be a second.
Thank you, Tina. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Item 53 is to receive a presentation on the tentative budget for fiscal year 2016. The Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada, the RTC, tentative budget for the fiscal year 2016 was filed on April 9, 2015, with the Nevada Department of Taxation and the Clark County Clerk's Office. The budget has been on record at the RTC and the County Clerk's Office for review by the public since April 9, 2015. The document includes the budget for all agency funds. This presentation will be followed by a public hearing on the tentative budget, and then the RTC Board of Commissioners will be asked to adopt the tentative budget as the final budget for fiscal year 2016. We'll start our budget presentation with a look at revenues. If you go to the next slide, we start out with sales tax, our largest source of revenue. We are budgeting a 3% increase for fiscal '16. Fiscal '15, we're currently up about 7.8% in sales tax. Next. The fare revenue, we are budgeting 1% increase in fiscal '16. Currently, in fiscal '15, we are experiencing a 0.6% increase. And our motor vehicle fuel tax, you can see, has been relatively flat. We haven't enjoyed the increases as we have in sales tax. We are budgeting a 1.2, we are budgeting flat, really. Our fiscal '15, we're looking at a 1.2% increase in motor vehicle fuel tax. On the next slide, we see our fuel revenue indexing, and that is a great enhancement to the Streets and Highways Program. We are budgeting $75 million of revenue in fiscal '16 for FRI. The next slide shows how we spend our budget, the funding uses. Our total budget for 2016 is $919.2 million. You can see 64% of that budget is capital, so we have a very capital-intensive program and budget for next year. 23% will go to services and supplies. Debt service will take up 9%, and salaries and benefits, 4%. Next, we'll look at transit expenditures. Our paratransit contract cost, we are budgeting $43 million for '16. We're enjoying a slight reduction in that expense in 2015 due to our new paratransit core service contract with TransDev. Our fixed route contract cost, we're budgeting that at $96 million next year. We are adding almost 70,000 hours of service for fixed route, and the contract has a scheduled increase of 1.1% in the rate. On the next slide, we show our budget of expenditures, our operating expenditures for transit, and the total budget is $215.2 million, 89% being services and supplies, and salaries and benefits being 6%, and transfers out, 5%. We'll move on to the capital budget. Our capital budget for next year for transit is $89.2 million. 77% of that $89.2 million is grant-funded. The Transit Mobility Center is an $8.1 million project. We're budgeting $5.6 million on that in fiscal '16. That project is already started, and that project is 80% grant-funded. We're budgeting $8.2 million for bus shelters and safety enhancements, and that one is also 80% grant-funded. We're buying buses next year, compressed natural gas. We're acquiring 80 paratransit vehicles at a cost of $8.6 million, and these vehicles are 85% grant-funded. We're also acquiring 55 new fixed route compressed natural gas vehicles at a cost of $38.2 million, and those buses are also 85% grant-funded. We have a big project on Flamingo Road for improvements to that corridor. It's a $46.9 million budget, and you can see there are various funding sources for that project, one being a Tiger Grant from the FTA of $13.3 million. That was a competitive grant that we won. NDOT is contributing $18 million to that project, and FRI will contribute $8 million to Flamingo. Our Streets and Highways Program, you can see, the majority of that is fuel tax indexing at $358.4 million. That will equate to about 4,625 jobs. Our next slide is a summary of our debt. Our total debt is $945.7 million. Our FRI, we anticipate, will be $270 million next year of bonds. We've already issued $100 million of bonds and anticipate another $170 million in bonds next year. Our debt service is projected at $80 million for next year. To show what we're thinking of for the FRI bonds, instead of issuing one... To show the, what we're thinking of for the FRI bonds, instead of issuing one issuance of $170 million, we're looking at two issuances of $85 million to save a little interest instead of carrying the whole $170 at one time. Like to save a little interest there. And that concludes my prepared comments. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Let me open the public hearing. Excuse me. We read both 53 and 54, but let me open the public hearing on 54. Is there anyone that wishes to make a comment on the tentative budget? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any comments or questions from any of the board members? I would accept a motion to approve 53 and 54. It's been moved by Mayor Tobler, seconded by Councilman Ross. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 55?
Yeah, we need one more motion to do.
That was the tentative. Mark, you want to read item Number 55?
Yes. Be glad to. Item 55 is for the Commission to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2016 and direct the Department of Finance to transmit the final budget as adopted to the Nevada Department of Taxation. So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Ross, seconded by Mayor Mesquite. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, your last item is your final citizens' participation period.
It's time for public comment. If there's anyone that wishes to discuss anything, regardless of whether it's on the agenda or not. Thank you. Dennis Hennessy, good morning.
Good morning, Councilmembers, staff. Before I start, I'd like to give my note appreciation for Councilman Ross. And this kind of goes to all of you. I saw Councilman Ross at a Little League Opening Day Ceremony where he got up and gave an opening speech. I happened to be conned into coaching my grandson's seven-year-old team. And just for all of you to know, it really means a lot when you guys get up and you get out in the community and you do the things that you do in the community. I know each and every one of you do that, but Councilman Ross, this being the final time, I'll get to publicly say thank you for what you did, and it really meant a lot to see you. Councilman, why I'm here today has a lot to do with why I've been here for most every month of this year, which is, as you recall, I used to do a little tidbit called Dirty Driving. And because I felt that none of you, including staff, cared about the condition of our buses, I quit doing it, though I reminded you every month that our buses were still filthy. You've sat here and listened and listened. You've listened to the hogwash that Silver State comes up and they tell you. It's just a big broom that's been swept and it goes under the rug. It's all hogwash. Now, Channel 13 broke a story this week. Now, I'm coming before you as a driver, not as a member of a union. You don't see a big contingency of union people here. I come to you as a driver and say that this pesticide situation that was brought out by Channel 13 is woefully wrong. My grandkid's school sends letters out when pesticides are used, are going to be used in the school. So, the school district gets it. You guys have had to escape a way out for a long time because you have contractors that Silver State works for. Well, guess what? Darcy Spears has let you know that pesticides are being used on our buses. Shame on you guys for not putting quality control in there. I've been telling you for a year that our buses have been filthy. Shame on you, M.B. Keolis, for not taking care of your employees. And by the way, in a matter of goodwill, we've got drivers with rashes, we have passengers with COPD. This is a serious problem. If I was you guys, I'd go right back to the negotiating table today and suggest you're a goodwill. I'd sign that contract. Because you know, with all the constituents, as you talked about, Madam Chair, I'm glad to hear you say that constituents mean the deal. There's a whole bunch of people, even if just 1% of our ridership has had problems with breathing on these buses, I can tell you that my fellow drivers are getting rashes, they're getting whatever. But I look to you as staff because now, even if just 1% of our constituents get sick, that's a pretty big class that I'm sure some in the legal community is looking at. Thank you.
About the pesticides, and I believe that the policy is being reviewed. So, thank you. Jose?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jose Mendozzo Jr., President and Business Agent for Local 1637. In regards to Brother Dennis Hennessy right now mentioning about the Channel 13 report, we are very disappointed that RTC was aware of it, but yet we were not informed as a nonprofit organization, or even, I don't know if the companies were informed, that it was being used. It is a health hazard to the mechanics, to the drivers, and the riding public. This is a perfect example of RTC just ignoring the riding public and the employees who use the contract. That being said, we did file a formal complaint with OSHA, the State of Nevada, to look into this matter and see how many more different type of pesticides are being used on the buses. So, it'll be on Ms. Quigley's shoulder, and hopefully it gets corrected, because our concern is, of course, being there for the public, transport them, and also the riding public to be riding on safe buses, not buses that are being sprayed with pesticide. Okay, my second issue I have right now in the update on negotiations. The members rejected the contract that we have proposed on April 25. Keolis and ATU immediately met on May 4th and May 5th. There was some movement made, and we'll be meeting again next week with the negotiating team for ATU, and hopefully with our counter-proposal to Keolis, hopefully it gets resolved. I don't see any major dispute. It was just a matter of an understanding of a contract language, and they came back to the table instead of imposing the contract. Now, as for MV, MV apparently, we're trying to get an arbitrator so we go to interest-binding arbitration, but we just found out that there had been an extension given to them. So, we might have a little problem or issue with that, but we'll give you another update next month. But hopefully, it's something that we can work with, and there will be no work stoppages on either yard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that wishes to address us? Mr. Marion?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, for the record, Bill Marion, Purdue Marion Associates, 3455 Cliff Shadows Parkway. I would like to share with you the information that was given to Channel 13's investigative reporter. Buses are only fumigated when an actual pest issue arises. In the last six months, with the 16 routes and 231 buses that Keolis operates, there have only been 11 such occurrences. Indeed, in the past 12 months, there have been a total of 18. On the Flamingo route, which was the focus of her story, there were two occurrences on the same double-decker bus in November and December of 2015. There have been no other incidences or fumigations of a double-decker bus on that route since then. The reporter claimed that a driver told her that a bus is never out of service for more than two to three hours. This is incorrect. The reporter was informed in two separate emails that the fumigation process takes a minimum of 16 hours because it takes a minimum of two hours for defogging, a minimum of two more hours for ventilating, and then the bus interior is fully detailed, all seats are shampooed, and the bus is ventilated again so that the seats thoroughly dry. The reporter asked for the specific maintenance log related to the double-decker bus on the Flamingo Route for verification, and she was provided with the following. C-117 was out of service November 24 at 13:50, returned at 20:18 on November 25 for a total of 30 hours and 20 and 17 minutes. C-117 was out of service December 2, 2014, at 9:27, returning December 3 at 11:44 for a total of 26 hours and 28 minutes. The reason for the same coach being fumigated twice was that the same individual boarded that bus twice with head lice. On both occasions, the pest issue was successfully resolved. With regard to the product that was used, Channel 13 contacted the Nevada Department of Agriculture, and the Nevada Department of Agriculture responded to them directly with this, and I quote, "RTC can legally use hot-shot fogger with odor neutralizer, U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Number 96883098845 on its buses. All pesticide products must be used in accordance to label directions. This product can be used legally on furniture, upholstery, and fabrics in enclosed spaces and in sites such as homes, trailers, boat cabins, and campers. The interior of a bus is an enclosed space similar to the sites listed. When used according to label directions, they are safe to use and effective." That was the information we provided to Channel 13. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and appreciate the clarification, but appreciate that, I think, no matter what, we need to make sure there's a policy for notification, and I think that that's something that can be taken a look at by either company as far as that's concerned. Thank you very much. Any, anyone further? Okay, we will close the public comment period, and are you coming down? We will not close the public comment period. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. My name is Patricia Panisi. I take the handicap bus. I have a compliment for the driver. April 21, Tuesday, 8:40, the bus driver picked me up. I was on the phone with my doctor because I was feeling horrible. The driver heard my doctor's office say, "Tell the driver to pull over and call the paramedics." The driver pulled over, called the paramedics, and the directions he gave to the paramedics, because he stopped at the downtown Summerlin Mall, were perfect. The paramedics showed up. They didn't drive around and around. They took me to Summerlin Hospital, and I was having a heart issue. So, we could say the guy possibly saved my life, certainly took care of me. My only disappointment about the situation is I called Kenny Rodriguez's office twice to say thank you. Please talk to the driver and say thank you, and I didn't get a return call. Ms. Quigley, I called your office twice. I left a message on Siobhan's voicemail twice, and I didn't get a call back. Would somebody please, from the bottom of my heart, thank that driver for what he did for me that night and recognize him for the way in which he represented your company with the absolute professionalism and skill that I've come to know for the last six and a half years that I've been riding?
Thank you very much, and glad you're better and glad that he acted on your behalf.
Thank you.
We will get back to him.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, public comment period is now closed, and we can stand adjourned. Have a great day.